Welcome to the Eastern School Committee of Thursday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. If you have a question for the Q and A, please state, type in your name and address, or your question won't be looked at. If questions have been asked and answered, then, and you are later on in the evening, then it probably won't get answered again. Also, this is being live on Zoom, but also on Ecat and FaceTime Live, I believe. All right, if anybody has any comments? No. Okay, here we go. Minutes, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Any comments, corrections, or questions? Once again, Lynn, you're fabulous. Your minutes are impeccable. Nobody? I don't see any questions. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one?
Wiseman so moved.
Second.
Star second.
Okay, second, all right. All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Presentation of me en masse with discussion and possible vote to approve. Dr. Cabral, do you want to take this, or?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, we have a student joining us this evening, I believe. Let me just see if she's on. Dr. Cabral, she's already on.
Yep, she's right here.
Oh, I can't see her on my screen. Okay, good. So, I am going to ask her to correct me if I am incorrect on how I pronounce her name, because of course, everyone mispronounces my name, so I try to be sensitive to that. And so, please correct me as soon as you come on. Your first thing can be to tell me I was wrong. Akila, Akila, Akila is a freshman at OA, and she's the Eastern chapter lead of a national organization called Generation Ratify. This youth-led movement is to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment and advance gender equality in America. She reached out to Chair DeLuca to come and speak to you this evening on behalf of the Generation Ratify Massachusetts and their current project. So, please pronounce your first name for us again, and then you have the floor.
So much. Yes, my name is Akila Semtukmar. I'm a freshman at OA, and my pronouns are she/her/hers. I'm here today to discuss why our high school and middle school need to start providing free period products to students. Period poverty is defined as an inadequate access to menstrual products in education. It can be very easy to assume that this is a problem that only plagues impoverished communities, and I will admit, I initially thought the same thing. Countless high schoolers across the country, and here in Massachusetts as well, miss school all because they aren't able to access this necessary menstrual products. As a firm believer that our socioeconomic status shouldn't determine our ability to succeed, and having never gone without, I was horrified. Suddenly, the ones facing this problem weren't just a number on a page or a statistic, they were my classmates, friends, and family. I recently met with Majority House Leader and State Representative Claire Cronin to discuss HG six-ten. HG six-ten filed by Representative Jeffrey Roy is a bill which will require all public schools, grades six to twelve, in Massachusetts to allow access to free menstrual products in their bathroom. She understood the importance of period poverty and stated that this is an equity issue. It is an issue that disproportionately affects primarily low-income students. It is important. Taking her words into account, it is unfair that students facing the consequences of financial strain should be dealt the shorthand of the stake in a circumstance that they did not even choose to face, let alone can control the function of. Public school is supposed to be accessible to all, something that is perceived to be full of equity and equal opportunity. But what does it say about our system when an issue as important as menstrual equity is not addressed and continues to take a mental toll on the minority of the student body? The lack of awareness of menstrual inequity is a large barrier that stands between the Massachusetts public school system and equity for all. I personally know people who have suffered the mental effects of an inaccessible period products. One story in particular truly fueled my passion towards the subject. A woman I know had forgotten her menstrual products at home when she was in high school, and she did not realize that her period was approaching. Her pants ended up getting stained from her period, and she was bullied till the end of high school. The mental effects that she suffered from being consistently bullied from that circumstance could have easily been avoided had she had the necessary access to free period products. Now, even though there are menstrual products in the bathroom, they require a compensation of around fifty cents. I'd asked my peers if they had the necessary change to pay for the available period products, and only fifteen percent of the menstruators I had asked had the necessary money. But that fifteen percent should not be the only group with an access to menstrual products, because one hundred percent of those people menstruate. Periods and period products are often viewed as a culturally taboo subject, and most people wouldn't ever willingly admit that they can't afford it. Menstruators in high school and middle school would never dream of telling somebody that they have missed school or used socks because they can't pay for pads. Instead, they suffer in silence, and consequently, their educational attainment and achievement deteriorate. Eighty-six percent of menstruators have unexpectedly started their period in public without the supplies they need, according to Free the Tampons data. Eight in ten improvised with toilet paper or something else, and sixty-two percent went immediately to the store to buy supplies, which is not an option for most middle and high school students. One in three went immediately home. A study conducted by Harris Insights and Analytics in two thousand and eighteen found that one in four menstruators aged thirteen to eighteen have missed class because they didn't have access to tampons or pads. One in five menstruators cannot afford to purchase products, and two in three menstruators have worn a tampon for over six hours. This is inexcusable. Medical experts and gynecologists recommend that tampons are changed every four hours, and that nothing other than menstrual hygiene products are used to stay safe and healthy. No other materials besides menstrual products should be used, since only menstrual products appeal to serve the purpose. When a large number of students are using products best to save time and are using socks and newspapers to stay clean, isn't that an indication that it is time to see a change in the way our school run? Providing access to period products will help innumerable students, and although their gratitude may go unseen or unheard, the positive effects of this simple investment can be measured through qualitative data. Four states require students or require schools to provide menstrual products to students: New Hampshire, New York, California, and Illinois. In New York City, a two-point-four percent increase in attendance in menstruators was observed in the first year alone. Massachusetts could see also a similar jump in attendance if HG six-ten is passed. Seven other states excluding Massachusetts, such as Delaware, have bills in their legislature which though would tackle the issue. Carrie Stahl, a high school teacher from Milford, Delaware, keeps a stash of tampons and pads in her classroom to save students from having to trek down to the nurse's office and potentially miss a whole class period while they wait for the nurse's attention. Teachers having to use their own salary that the state pays them to provide for students with menstrual products is clearing evidence that schools need to provide products to students. The cost of supplying products to schools is one of the main arguments that the opposition makes. However, you will find that the actual cost of investing into this is lower than the money schools lose when students don't attend due to their period. To put that into better perspective, in New Hampshire, Rochester Public Schools were the first to supply products to their students. They set aside four thousand dollars, around point zero-zero-zero-zero-six percent of their seventy million annual dollar budget. Six hundred thousandths of a percent, essentially nothing. Similar numbers are seen for Massachusetts schools. The leader of the menstrual equity in Massachusetts campaign researched the financial aspect of a school in our district, and I would love to provide you the numbers in case cost was an issue that you were considering. Eastern Public Schools received eleven million, seven hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars in funding from the state in two thousand and seventeen. Although public school is free, there is still a quote-unquote tuition for each student that is covered by taxes. When students miss school, money is lost. If you estimate conservatively and say that twenty-five percent of menstruators, around one hundred fifty students for Oliver Ames High School miss five days of school, each due to their period, the state would lose thirteen thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars of the money they provided to Eastern. Conversely, Eastern Public Schools would need to invest three thousand, three hundred fifty dollars the first year in order to cover installing dispensers and products, and one thousand five hundred dollars the following years to resupply products. By setting aside just point zero-three percent of the annual state funding provided to them, Eastern Public Schools could save ten thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars the first year alone, and eleven thousand, nine hundred forty-one dollars the year after. Menstrual inequity is everywhere, and to ignore the problem is to ignore injustice. As a society, we're not conditioned to carry around toilet paper, but we have the expectation that menstruators are going to carry tampons around at all times. Menstruation cannot be controlled, and it is just as much of a natural function as going to the bathroom is. Yet somehow menstruation is treated like it should not happen. We have to pay for menstrual products because somehow we were responsible for something that we have no control over. It is unjust that although over half of the student body in faculty menstruates, the essentials for the function of menstruation are not guaranteed the same way that toilet paper is guaranteed for all the student body. Why is menstruation treated so differently, although it is just as natural? Our main focus as young people should be our education, and not if we will suffer from toxic sock syndrome as a result of keeping a product in too long, or if we will be able to afford pads the next time our cycle comes around. Unfortunately, the statistics I discussed show that this is too often the case. As our school board, you have the ability to change the norm and combat menstrual inequity. You have the ability to make Eastern one of the few tabs that supports all students and provide us with what we need. With the aforementioned bill on the horizon of the Massachusetts Legislature, by taking action now, you are preparing for something that will hopefully be put into action soon. Thank you so much for hearing me speak today.
Akila, very good job. You're gonna be, I'm gonna see you on the horizon, I know that. All right, does anybody have any questions for Akila? Okay, Caroline?
I just wondered what the high school administrations and possibly middle school administrations' response has been to this. I, by the way, did an absolutely wonderful job, Akila, and made an incredibly credible and convincing argument for this. But I just wondered what your interaction with administration has been to date.
I actually have had a bit of a miscommunication with them, but I will eventually reach out to them more about this. But recently, I actually tried to launch a project with them, and it's been a little bit of a miscommunication, but I tried to talk to them directly about this issue, and I will definitely take immediate action, basically based on how the school board acts with this first.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was great. And I actually have a friend who's a teacher, or who was a teacher in a public school district where this was a problem, and I was never aware that this was a problem. And she was in the high school, and she told me about how many girls would miss school because of this, and how the teachers would bring in supplies for them. So, it was really shocking to me when she told me this. I'm very glad you're bringing attention to this issue, so thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Chair, DeLuca? Just as a point of clarification, we do have feminine products in the nurses' offices at both the middle school and high school for free, and they're, and it is regularly stocked. For, as a point of clarification, I'm not sure, though, if Akila means products for home, because I think, you know, you discussed the disproportionality of those who can't afford feminine products. Are you looking for support for young women to bring products home for when they're not in school?
No, this is more to provide in the bathroom. As I think I discussed, I did take account of the fact that they are provided in the nurse's room, but sometimes we don't have the luxury of going down there because of how big our school is. We don't have the time to go there, because it takes a while. For example, I have like a majority of my classes on the third floor, and if I had to go all the way down every single time my period came to get products, it would take away time from my learning, and it wouldn't just be as easy as if the products were to be provided in the bathroom, because that would be like a five-minute trip, whereas going to the nurse's office would be like a ten-to-fifteen-minute trip.
Okay, so, thank you very much. So, Chair DeLuca, I'm not sure this is a topic for you to vote. You clearly support it, and I don't think that the school would not support it. I think that, you know, Akila had mentioned that she has not been able to discuss it with the administration, and this sounds like either a cost-neutral or very minimal investment that shouldn't be a financial issue. You could certainly express your support, but I don't know that it's actually necessary for a vote, because I don't think that there's a policy change that needs to be made. If that becomes problematic, then certainly you could revisit it, but I don't anticipate that's the case, because we haven't heard from administration yet.
Okay.
And I'm sure you do support it, as do I, because, of course, Akila made a wonderful presentation.
Okay, yes, and I was also going to comment on this House bill, House Doc at six-ten, that in, by August first, two thousand and twenty-two, that the restrooms will be filled with these units to purchase, or actually, is it for free? Are they gonna, are the ones in the restroom that you're talking about, are they for free, Akila?
Yes, when we pass the bill, they will be required to be free. As of right now, it requires, I think, what I said, is a fifteen cent or a fifty cent compensation.
Okay, so that, and that's what you were talking about, the money involved. And as a former teacher at the middle school, I do remember having things in my desk drawer, but, you know, just so they didn't have to go all the way to one end of the building. And, you know, it was pretty discreet. Kids kind of, you know, we had a little code or whatever. And, but I agree with Dr. Cabral. Is there a way that, you know, you had talked about people not having enough supplies at home? Is there something that can be done in that realm? Do you know?
I unfortunately do not. I can definitely look at more if you want me to, and I could give you the information.
That would be awesome. Thank you very much. All right, and I believe, go ahead, Caroline.
Well, it actually sounds like there's almost two challenges, now that I've listened to what everyone's saying. I do think that there should be a way that we could provide products for youngsters that may have difficulty affording them, you know, just in general. And then, of course, having them conveniently located for free in the restrooms makes perfect sense. So, I'm wondering, I mean, there may be another avenue that we have to pursue in terms of providing products. I know, strangely enough, sometimes places like the food pantries provide some, you know, auxiliary, I think diapers and things like that. So, there may be other ways, but I do think it would be great if we could just have at the high school and middle school a way that anyone who is finding it challenging to purchase those products could receive them to take home as well. I mean, I don't, that may be something further down the road, but I think, thank you, Jackie, for pointing out that this is something that, you know, probably should have been on our radar a long time ago, but just hard to keep everything on our radar. But, and thank you again, Akila, for a wonderful presentation.
Thank you for seeing me. Before I go, could I possibly take a screenshot of this to just document the meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Jen, did you want to say something to Akila?
Yeah, I want, I echo the great presentation. I have a student who's also a freshman and at OA, and you are light years ahead of your peers in terms of your presentation skills. So, it's a great job putting this together and getting through the presentation, especially on a topic that can be hard to talk about in public. So, good for you there. Regarding the House, the House bill, so this is making its way through the legislature, right? It hasn't been approved yet?
No, it hasn't been voted on. We're trying to get more co-sponsors. We've met with Carolyn Dukima and Mindy Dom and Representative Claire Cronin. I'm not really sure if Mindy Dom has co-sponsored it yet, but unfortunately, Representative Claire Cronin, as Majority House Leader, in attempts to stay unbiased, hasn't co-sponsored the bill, but does support it.
Okay, so what I wanted to add was, if at any point in the future, it would be helpful to have, like, sometimes the school committee does resolutions in support of legislative items, if you feel that it would be helpful to have us consider doing a resolution that could be forwarded as part of a support package. I think that we would be open to hearing about that and considering it. So, just wanted to put that out there, if it does help to get school committees behind it. I think we'd be, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I know I would be interested in pursuing that. And another avenue for you might be if you haven't reached out to Mass Association of School Committees, to also reach out to them, because we have a pretty big platform and voice in the legislature.
I would definitely find that helpful. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, so Akila, we're all in. Michelle, go ahead.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to echo the thank you for coming and talking about such an important topic. There's no way I would have done this in ninth grade. So, kudos to you, and I wish you luck and anything we can do to support you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Akila.
Yeah, so Akila, you're gonna talk to the principals, and then, and like we said, if you need a resolution or something in support of this bill, just contact me and we'll put something together. And anything else, just send an email to me and we'll try to figure it out, okay? Great job.
Thank you again. Have a nice year. Bye.
Thank you very much, Akila. Bye-bye. All right, that was awesome. All right. Presentation of a senior project and vote to approve donation. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So, Haley Cuthbert is gonna be joining us. She is another Oliver Ames student. She's a senior. And as part of her senior project, she has, is trying to spread awareness of autism and the importance of inclusion. Inclusion. Not only do you have Haley's letter to the school committee in your packet, but you also have a locally published newspaper article about her efforts, and she's here to present that information to you this evening. This is a very exciting and generous donation that is the fruit of her labor. So, Haley, welcome, and you have the floor.
So, yeah, hi, I'm Haley Cuthbert. I'm a senior at Oliver Ames High School, and I plan to go to college next year as an inclusive elementary education major. So, at the onset, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak about my senior project. It's definitely one of my favorite courses I've ever taken at Oliver Ames. And so, I was invited here to just, today, to discuss a donation I'd like to give to the Eastern Public School System. So, just in case you don't know a lot about senior project, it's a course at Oliver Ames where fifteen students are chosen to basically create a project on whatever they want, whether it's a passion, an interest, a career choice, basically anything, as long as that there is some learning, some research, and a tangible product at the end. So, I wanted to do this project for a long time, but I never had the outlet to do it. So, I was very excited when I heard about this course at Oliver Ames. So, my project is about raising awareness for autism spectrum disorder, as well as talking about how inclusion can be beneficial in a school system, and how different ways to like implement it. My inspiration for this project was due to my younger sibling who does, who is on autism spectrum disorder, as well as my work with the Best Buddies Chapter at Oliver Ames, where I've been the friendship coordinator for the past two and a half years. Very sad to have to leave it next year, but I will still continue it in the future. So, senior project is basically broken down by term. So, the first term is where you create your project, you kind of finalize the idea, you figure out exactly what you're gonna do, what goals you're gonna do to achieve it. Second term is when you begin your fieldwork in creating the project. So, my fieldwork was with my mentor, Carrie Lawson, where I sat in on her occupational and physical therapy meeting each week. It was every Wednesday, where I just got to sit and observe and see the lesson and see how it can be implemented into my project. The second and third term is where you write a research paper. So, I wrote over a hundred bullet notes about autism spectrum disorder, the disability itself, what it is, the different struggles that they face, what are some solutions, like behavioral therapy, sensory integration therapies, and in general, how inclusion can be better implemented in school systems, and the importance of it and different strategies to do it, and how it can help all students despite not having an intellectual disability. So, all of this is going on. You're working independently on your own senior projects. So, my tangible product was a fundraiser. So, I worked with Piesco Sporting Goods, where I created a logo for my project, which was called The Puzzle Piece Project, where I created a logo of a puzzle piece, and I put it on apparel like t-shirts and sweatshirts. And over, I was given a shop through their website. So, for a span of about maybe three weeks, it was selling. And thankfully, to the support of the community, I got over a hundred orders, and I got many direct donations. So, that was amazing. And as you know, that there was also some media coverage. I was in a couple newspapers. I was on the radio a couple times. I did an interview with WBZ News. It was a great experience, and I was just happy to be able to spread that inclusion. The reason why I'm here today is what I want to do with the funds. So, after all of the time with the donations during the window of selling and all of the media coverage, I was able to raise two thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventeen cents, which was much more than I was expecting. So, I wanted to be able to donate it to the Eastern Public School System. I knew I didn't want to just do a charity. I wanted to give back to the school system that helped me grow as a person, helped me figure out what I wanted to do in the future. So, initially, my first plan was to purchase and donate sensory integration materials to the Eastern Public School System. Sensory integration materials are normally what people know as like fidget toys, as well as flexible seating options, finding different ways for students to take out that restless energy and helps them to focus. So, it is scientifically proven that sensory integration materials are used to help reduce anxiety, help students focus, especially those with intellectual disabilities. But it also is beneficial to all students despite not having an intellectual disability. It just helps censor that energy that they usually have when they want to like go to recess, and they can't at that time, because you're in class and you're learning. So, it helps someone give them like a point to just put all the energy as well as their learning. So, it's actually used to help benefit students and their productivity in class. But as I'm getting toward the end of my year, and I am also not in the school, so I don't know what is already being implemented, what is needed, what is already purchased. I thought I would donate it to the Eastern Public School Systems, specifically the Department of Special Education, since they're gonna be, they're working with the students. They know what is needed, what will best like represent the student body. So, I was hoping today to be able to give back and give this donation to you guys. So, thank you for letting me share my project with you guys.
Haley, thank you. What a nice presentation, and congratulations. Two thousand dollars, two thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. That is awesome in a three-week time, right? Three weeks?
Yeah, about three weeks, a little bit later for some donations, but most of it was within three weeks.
That's wonderful. Congra, and you know, we love the senior project. It's been, I'd say, maybe what, five, six years it's been around? And I'll tell you, the kids that come out of that, they said the same thing that you did, that it's their favorite class, and it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. But thank you very much. Go ahead, Caroline.
I just wanted to say that I absolutely love your enthusiasm, and I'm not at all surprised that you were successful, because your passion really comes across so clearly. So, thank you so much for doing this. It's really, really remarkable, Haley.
Thank you.
Now, Dr. Cabral, we are allowed to accept this, and it will go to the SPED group to use where needed in this light?
Will go to Special Education Department, and Haley, as the donor, you can earmark it specifically for the purpose that you had intended, or open it up to what the department determines is the most critical need. It's entirely up to you.
Okay, thank you so much. I definitely hope that I can help purchase those sensory integration materials, but if there is something that's out of greater need, I'm totally okay with having that. I just want to make sure it's going to such an amazing community that does need additional support.
It absolutely will, Haley. Thank you so much.
Of course, thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments right now? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept Haley's donation of two thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventeen cents to be put to the Special Education Department for use as Haley sees fit. And we certainly thank you. Do I have a second?
O'Neil, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, and thank you, Haley, very much. Congratulations. We are very proud of you.
Thank you.
Haley, I would just ask if you can contact the business office, and they'll talk you through exactly how you can do that, and if you have any difficulty at all, just reach out directly to me, and I'll help you.
Okay, thank you. I will.
Thank you very much.
And good luck with everything, Haley. All right, next is the presentation and possible vote on spring sports plan. Dr. Cabral?
Okay, with absolutely no slight intended to Mr. Matthews, I think there should be some kind of resolution that we start every school committee meeting from now on with student presentations, please. with student presentations, please. Or maybe end them with student presentations. Okay, Mr. Matthews, athletic director is here. As you know, with every season, we have modifications. He's done a stellar job to this point. It is a very difficult area to stay on top of. We make it as safe as we possibly can and spring sports are upon us. So Mr. Matthews is here to explain the modifications to this season in this unique year. Mr. Matthews?
Good evening, everybody. Boy, those students just make me feel inadequate. They're amazing. Just the maturity, the intelligence, the commitment. It's really impressive. I had sent out the spring sports plan to Lynn, which I assume all of you have received. It's very straightforward. It mirrors what we've done in prior seasons. We're now almost all the way through our third season and we basically have gotten in almost every contest that we have scheduled thus far. And we've had some quarantines, but we haven't had a tremendous amount of positive cases. So things actually, I think, have gone very well. It's a little chaotic, but it's been absolutely worthwhile. And I think the student athletes are very grateful, as are the parents. So I present to you my spring sports plan, which would be baseball, softball, boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls tennis, boys and girls track, boys and girls unified track, cheer, competitive cheer, which is off-season. It's a different season, but it was delayed from a prior season. And then finally, wrestling, if approved by the MIAA. They have delayed the decision on that. And the information that we've received from the MIAA is that they do expect to approve it, but it seems that something is holding it up because we did expect some news on it last week. We didn't get it. We're hoping to get something this week, but we're not absolutely sure when we will get it. But again, this mirrors the prior plan, so I don't feel it's necessary for me to go through the details of it. But I certainly would open this up for any questions that you have, that you have at this time about the plan.
Right. Go ahead, Jen?
So I know it's the one that, the one question that's still out there with the MIAA. Regarding wrestling. So obviously, it's very, very, very close contact. How long does a typical match last between two contestants?
For JV matches, they do two periods of two minutes and then a third period of one minute. And for varsity matches, I believe it's three minutes, three minutes, and two minutes. I could be wrong about that final period. It might be three minutes long.
Okay. And so is, is part of the logic there that the contact is for a brief period of time?
I have not been able to determine what their logic is on it at this point in time. I do know that they have their sports medicine committee. They have their COVID task force and then a final approval through the board of directors in order to get anything, any of the sport modifications approved. So from everything that I've seen thus far, they have thought through the concerns of every sport and put processes and rules and adjustments in place to make them safe. So I can't really speak to it, Jen, in terms of what they're going to do, you know, if they do approve it. But I do have a lot of confidence that if they do approve it, they will put the structure in place to make it safe to compete.
Okay. Thank you.
Caroline? I know how terribly important sports are for so many of our students, so it's always during a time like this, it's, it's a fraught question about how to proceed. Rochelle Walensky, who's the new CDC director, just recently said that there has been quite a bit of transmission associated with youth sports. I'm sure you're well aware of this. So I, I know that you're doing whatever you can. I wouldn't say that what the MIAA is doing is actually making the sports safe, but I think they're making them as safe as possible under the circumstances in which sports are played, you know. So I, I I give you a lot of credit for looking at this so carefully and, and trying to. I, I do think that in general, our athletic department does a better job than many districts in terms of enforcing the protocols that are in place, and I give you a lot of credit for that. But I just, I don't think that we can really characterize it as making sports safe. We're, we're taking some risk. But on balance, you know, the benefit to the kids is so enormous that we, I think, do take that, that amount of risk. But we, we can't really just say it's safe. I mean, I, sorry to be kind of a little picky on that point, but I don't think that we should kind of say to the world, oh, it's perfectly safe. It's, it's safer than it would be certainly played in any kind of tradition, the the sports played in any traditional way. In many cases, much safer. But anyway, but thank you for all the effort you've put in in trying to, to keep our kids as safe as possible. Bill, I really, I know this has been quite a process for you this year.
Your point is well taken, Caroline, on that terminology. And I don't know about all of you, but COVID fatigue, I think, is a real, it's a real thing. I mean, you get to a point where you're just like, wow. It takes a lot of energy, really, to stay on top of it and to keep, keep plugging forward, rescheduling games, that type of thing, but absolutely worth it. So again, I appreciate the support and the wrestling piece of it. You know, I really don't know what to expect there. I just hope that the kids do have an opportunity and that the adjustments that the MIAA puts forth will provide, you know, a relatively safe way for them to be able to compete.
I would just like to say, this is the group of kids that I, I mean, I feel bad for everybody, but these kids didn't even get to play last spring. So, you know, they finished basketball and then boom, we were, you know, into finished basketball and hockey and then we were into the COVID blackout. So your, all your paperwork is, you know, as every season you've done, it's very good. So I feel like it's a way to go. Anyone else wanna make a comment? Okay, so I will make a motion to accept the spring sports plan as presented by Mr. Matthews. Do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
You don't have to say yes if you don't want to, you know.
Oh, no. I, what I said is that I think that the benefit to the kids is so enormous that, you know, we have to take some risks. So I'm saying yes. I'm okay with yes.
Thank you, Caroline. DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you so much, Mr. Matthews. Very well done.
Thank you for all your support. And just for one, one more quick second, Caroline, one of the things that I have tried to observe to the best of my ability is when we have a positive case on a team, is to really observe what's going on with the rest of the team. Do we typically see a spread? Because these kids are obviously practicing with one another, whether it's soccer or basketball or field hockey or whatever it might be. And, and one of the things that I've consistently seen is that that positive case typically doesn't result in another positive case on that team. And I find that to be very encouraging. So much of what we've seen with multiple case quarantines are multiple positives are related to a situation where they've been in a social environment. So I, I think that hopefully that there's some confidence there that, that it's not creating undue risk in any way. So again, thank you all for your support.
I think you're right, Bill. I, I, that's my impression from things that parents have told me is that even though even their own kids have been quarantined, it's turned out that the rest of the team did not actually end up testing positive subsequently or having an illness. So I, I think you're exactly right that the it's not ending up with a lot of positive cases, even though we do have the occasional quarantine or periodic quarantine, I guess. It's not as occasional as we'd like. But you have done a wonderful job, really trying to find that balance. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have personnel changes. Dr. Cabral?
I think, I don't know how many meetings in a row this is. We have two more retirements this evening. Both of them, both of these professionals are from Richardson Olmsted. Monica Hurley Lawson began with EPS in nineteen ninety-nine as a lunch playground aide at what was then the FL Olmsted School. In two thousand and two, she took on the role of a paraprofessional at FL, excuse me, FL Olmsted. And she is still there today. She has been with the district for twenty-two years and plans to retire this June thirtieth. She is unfortunately not able to attend this meeting. But as I usually do, I'd like to just say a few words about Monica, one of the most friendly and she just always has a smile on her face. Very positive is the word I'm looking for, a very positive person. And I don't know if you are all aware that she actually runs the garden club over at Richardson Olmsted and has the greenest thumb of anyone I've ever met before and has really done so much with really small plots out there behind Richardson Olmsted. It's really quite impressive and they make significant contributions to the food pantry. So you know, she just spreads that sunshine everywhere. So we are very sorry to see her go.
I will read her letter. Dear Dr. Cabral and EPS family, on June thirtieth, I will be retiring after twenty years at Richardson Olmsted. I'm looking forward to spending more time on my photography and gardening, my favorite creative passions, spending time with family and traveling to all those places that I kept saying I would visit. This was not an easy decision to make, but it was time. Being a para has been especially rewarding for me and I have thoroughly enjoyed working alongside some very excellent teachers and staff. I will miss the children the most, of course. They have been a tremendous source of hope and happiness in my life and the reason why I get up so early every morning. I am grateful and truly blessed to have been given this opportunity all those years ago. Shout out to Dr. Gary Missola for convincing me to become part of the full-time staff. I hope to see you in the future, perhaps as a substitute, but definitely as the RO Garden Club leader. You can't get rid of me that easily, lol. I sincerely wish you and everyone all the best. Please continue to envelope the children with all your love and learning, care and concern, humor and humility. See you on Twitter. We dig EPS. Peace and love, Monica Lawson. PS, is the pandemic part of the reason I am retiring this year? Maybe. That's a great letter, Monica. Thank you. She, her photography is incredible. I don't know if you've ever seen any of her pieces, but she is amazing. Does anyone else wanna make any comments? All right, do I have a motion? Jen, go ahead. Sorry.
Yes, yes. So Monica was in at least one classroom for one of my kids many years ago and he still remembers her and she still remembers him, because that's the kind of person that she is. So it's, it's funny to actually see them sometimes connect on social media. You know, it's just one of those kind of, like, oh, gosh, you know each other from a very different setting. But I, she's such a ray of sunshine. Love the garden club, so talented. And as you mentioned, Nancy, your photography is amazing. So Monica, I am so happy for you and your retirement that you get to spend time doing all the wonderful things that you love and do so well. But RO will definitely miss you. So thank you for seeing you, because you've been amazing.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to accept Monica Lawson's retirement with regret. Do I have a second?
O'Neil's second, also with regret.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you very much and congratulations, Monica. Thank you. And one more, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Also from Richardson Olmsted, Lynath Anasio began her time in Eastern Public Schools in nineteen ninety-nine as a paraprofessional and a lunch playground aide at the then FL Olmsted School. In two thousand and one, she resigned, but she returned from two thousand and three to five as a long-term sub and was hired as a grade six teacher at FL Olmsted in two thousand and six. She received her professional teaching status in two thousand and nine. Over the course of her time with us, she has taught grades three, five, and six. When we started the curriculum leadership team, Lynn was a math curriculum leader from, in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen. She plans to retire on April thirtieth after spending just about twenty-two years in the district. I was fortunate to work with Lynn. Lynn is currently teaching grade three, incidentally. She, I've worked with her in a few areas. She's, we've done a lot of literacy work together, but Lynn also, as I noted, was the curriculum leader for math and it was a great experience getting to know her that way. As we started that team, it was, it was a lot of work and she was a great contributor to that. So really consummate professional, excellent teacher. And you don't have a letter from her this evening and she is not able to join us. We received notification of her retirement, but boy, certainly wish her well in her retirement and again, it's always bittersweet, but hopefully she'll have many happy years of retirement to do the things that she loves as well.
So I worked with Lynn and, well, I know her and her, her daughter graduated with my son. And that's a big deal, but it's cool. The funniest thing I wanna say is her name and somebody, because I was always like, oh, how do you say her name? And somebody said, one of her teammate, co-teachers, and was like, I wanna see you, but don't say moi, say ah. So I wanna see you. So anyway, she's just a lovely, lovely woman, fabulous family. Eastern's going to miss her, as we are with all of our retirees, but she, she's been all over the place, like Dr. Cabral said, different grades, different committees and, and places. And she, she's an awesome teacher, an awesome person. Caroline?
Well, one of the advantages of being around so long is that I can also speak to the fact that she was an incredible supporter of the schools, even as a parent before she began working for these EPS. She just was always very interested in educational matters and in making sure that kids were offered the best of opportunities. So I, I think it really is a loss. Her personality, as you alluded to, Nancy, is just wonderful. So.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, Jen, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yep, so my, none of my kids had Mrs. A, but I do remember at RO through the PTA, she was a tremendous supporter of all of our ideas and activities and would come to meetings and was just always an enthusiastic advocate for everything going on in the school. So I really appreciated that from a parent perspective. Will miss her.
Thanks, Jen. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Lynath Anasio.
Wiseman, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thanks. All right, number seven. Very exciting. The announcement of the new OA principal, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. And you can see she's joined our frame here. So Chrissy Pruitt, all along this process, has just run an extraordinary and very thorough and comprehensive search for our next Oliver Ames principal. She has explained that process before, so I won't repeat that, but I just wanna remind people exactly what we sort of put candidates through to even get to this point. They began with a remote interview with a committee of parents, a student, school committee member, staff, administrators, and community members. Then they, if they advanced, they moved on to an in-person meeting, which I sat in on just as an observer to listen so that I could frame my questions, should I meet any of them in the future. That was a little bit intimidating looking. It was in, if you Was a little bit intimidating looking. It was in, if you imagine where our meetings had been held in the um Simmons Lecture Hall. There were, I don't, fifteen, sixteen members of the committee? And they were all spread out, so it almost looked like a full lecture hall with. The candidates sitting up front at that humongous table. They also were asked to provide a writing prompt, an extemporaneous writing prompt, and they completed a mock evaluation. They uh watched a ten-minute clip of a, of a um non-EPS professional conducting a lesson. And um wrote up an evaluation for our review. Then, of course, there was a site visit at the district that the candidate is in, which was extremely comprehensive and thorough. Uh on its own, uh visiting team members were able to meet with um other administrators in the building. Uh faculty, students, ask questions, see them in their uh quote-unquote natural habitat. And um get an idea of how they interact with their coworkers, staff, and the students in the building. And then, of course, they came to Oliver Ames, which was another completely packed day of meeting with school committee. School administrators, the staff, students, parents. All of those groups were invited to complete feedback forms. It was extremely impressive how many people did, and that was so helpful. Uh personally, I read through every single one of them twice uh for, for the uh finalists, and they were extremely well done. And then, of course, extensive background checks, reference checks, internet searches. You, you can't imagine all that was done. I then, as if that weren't enough, conducted uh over two-and-a-half-hour one-on-one interview. With each of the two finalists, and what I do in those interviews is uh. Really, I just take the culmination of everything that has gotten us to the point of them being a finalist. And really are then able to drill down into any areas that perhaps we hadn't heard. Met uh some specific examples or about any experience or ideas or really. Uh beliefs and um and values that each of the finalists have. That they could bring to Oliver Ames in our very unique environment, so. After all of that, it was uh very easy for me to see that, first of all, the committee did a fantastic job. We were very fortunate to have thirty-one applicants for this position. Um this is a, a very uh. Uh a very uh well-known district with an extraordinary culture and staff. And uh was a good draw for us, and uh. At the very end, I was extremely happy and one hundred percent confident to offer. Mrs. Kelly Kavanaugh, who is currently um an assistant principal in Canton, the position of the next Oliver Ames principal. We are all very well aware that she will be filling the role of the longest-standing. Principal of Oliver Ames history and um just an extraordinary gentle, kind, and very genuine man. Who has done a fantastic job in his tenure at Oliver Ames. It's again, bittersweet. Um we're very happy for him, of course, now as a, as a granddad. And all that he'll be able to do in his retirement and should rightfully enjoy, certainly well-deserved. And uh it's gonna be a challenge, but it's also gonna be exciting, and we believe that Ms. Kavanaugh is. Well up to the challenge and um very well-prepared. Um we can't wait to introduce her personally uh as the principal to all the constituent groups. And they have an opportunity to welcome her warmly and um get to know her better as a person, so. She is uh here this evening, and I would like to give her the opportunity to address you. And uh Ms. Kavanaugh, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that great um introduction. I really appreciate it, Dr. Cabral. Um I just want to share with you how honored, proud, and excited I am to accept the position of the next principal of Oliver Ames High School. And and it's so fitting that the first time I'm being introduced publicly is here, because it is this community as a whole that drew me. To apply for the position. Parents and families, faculty and staff, students and the community at large. Here have a level of dedication and pride in the education um in Easton Public Schools. And it's, it's exceptional, and I am thrilled to become a member of that community. Um I look forward to a lot of listening and learning from you when I transition into this role and then growing and learning with you. Uh over the years to come, as we continue um our work at Oliver Ames High School to uh make it a remarkable place to belong. Um and I want to say thank you to the interview committee and to Chrissy for making this process um. Thorough and thoughtful and kind, um and something that I really enjoyed. I learned a lot about Easton and I learned a lot about myself as a leader during this process. So thank you very, very much. And if you don't mind, I'd be remiss to not acknowledge the two amazing students who spoke at the beginning of this. School committee meeting to Akila, I mean, you're, I have a passion as well for identifying barriers that prevent kids from being able to learn. And feel like they belong at school, and so I'm looking forward to working with you. And Haley, I began my career working with students diagnosed on the autism spectrum, and I have family members as well who are, and I have a true passion for it. And I commend you from the work you did this year. Um I would be remiss to not acknowledge that uh today, so thank you guys for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh would anyone like to ask Kelly anything or say anything to Kelly? Caroline?
Oh, okay. Well, congratulations. I'm also thrilled that you were selected. Um you know, this is entirely the superintendent's decision, but I certainly had my fingers crossed. Through this process, once I saw you, you know, when we had the school committee interaction with you, and then I also um. I um linked in to the parent, um you know, the parent interviews as well or the parent presentations, so. Um I'm really so pleased personally. Um I just felt that you came across as such a thoughtful person. Who wasn't, you know, quick to just jump on a new idea, but really, you know, just took it very carefully under consideration. There was just something about the way you responded to every question that particularly the parents asked that really impressed me, so um. You are, you do have a very tough act to follow. Wes Paul has been just an outstanding principal. He's created a wonderful culture at the high school. But um I'm very excited to have you bring some new ideas and some, you know, new initiatives, which I'm certain will be the case.
Jen, go ahead.
Hi, Kelly. It is great to see you again, and I just wanted to, to say hi again and welcome you and congratulate you on the position. I'm, I'm very happy um that we are moving forward with you. I think it'll be, I think it'll be a great fit, and I'm just. Really looking forward to seeing, you know, what happens in the future, so welcome.
Thank you, and thanks for serving on the committee. It was great to get to know you.
Jackie?
Kelly, nice to see you again. Not gonna ask you any questions. I think we did that enough, but I'm very excited. That you are back here and that you'll be serving as our principal, and I'm looking forward to working with you in the future and. Years down the line, I'm looking forward to my son being in your school, so thank you for coming here and welcome.
Great, thank you.
And congratulations, Kelly. Everybody's excited about this new uh chapter in Oliver Ames High School. History, so thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next, okay. Next is uh, and please, Kelly, feel free to stay for the budget. It's awesome. All right.
Uh what, I just have to say, Chair DeLuca, if that's okay, one thing is when we remove, when we remove somebody from the panel. It ends up removing them, I think, from the meeting, so you may have to log back in on another device, unfortunately. Um we're finding this kind of glitch with our, with.
Or, or Ms. Kavanaugh, if you prefer, you can just shut off your camera, or you can leave it on, but if you prefer, you can just shut it off and you can just watch from there.
That's right.
Great, thank you.
You don't have to, we're just, I'm not intimidating you. Okay. All right, Dr. Cabral, public hearing, FY twenty-two budget. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I will share my screen shortly, but uh we did not. Change too much from when um we spoke the first time I presented the budget. Uh there has been uh slightly more information on the grants. We are literally getting information day by day. So you will see that I was adding things um up until an hour, not even before this meeting. I will um review some of that with you with the understanding that even all of that is not. Uh finalized yet, so.
Dr. Cabral, I have it prepped here if you'd like me to.
Oh, okay, great. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so just to recap, the first two slides are gonna be just that, a recap. We haven't changed any of the um dollar amounts here. Or our request of the town or anything of that nature. We begin our, what we call our rollover by s- simply taking uh what would be a level-funded. Uh line item for labor, and we move that to FY twenty-two. Our staff was uh very cooperative this year, knowing that this was going to be a very difficult year. For operations, and they agreed, every single collective bargaining unit and individual contract agreed to a one percent. Adjustment uh for their salary next year and to put off contract negotiations until next year. So that's the only increase you can see. One percent would be from FY twenty-one would be forty-two. Uh excuse me, four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. The reason that the rollover is more than one percent. Even though the, that was the accepted increase is because some of our staff, the, the staff that has. Uh education requirements, for example, they have steps and lanes for years of service and for their uh education attainment. And we also spoke earlier in the year about having to increase our minimum wage offerings. To the few positions we have in the district that are at minimum wage or were very close to minimum wage. It's important that we stay competitive, not only with other districts, but any organization, store, et cetera, that could be offering minimum wage. That came, that total came to just over fifty thousand dollars of this total. So rolling over just level service was six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, just over that. And then skipping to the retirement savings, we believe we're aware of all the retirements before the end of the school year. We've taken them into account, uh including the ones this evening, and that gives us a two hundred and forty thousand dollar savings. From what the professional is earning when they retire, uh minus what we believe is the market value for replacing. That professional. FDK is full, full-day kindergarten. We've talked about this at length. We do have a, an incremental plan moving forward of adding money each year. Of approximately two hundred thousand dollars to the operating budget this ye- uh each year. To get us to a point where we can offer full free kindergarten for all students in Easton. That number, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, is not a round number because it actually represents positions. And so it's their actual rate of pay to move them from a tuition line to the operational budget. And we will endeavor to do that. It, it comes out to approximately. Point five or a half of a percent increase each year if we are going to follow this trajectory. And try to move to full free kindergarten within three to four years. We never know, of course, what the state of the economy is going to be. Covid is just a extraordinary example, but year to year, we've had a, a lot of fluctuation in the economy. We expect a robust recovery, but certainly we don't know if that will be the case, so this plan going forward is a plan. It could change. Um in fact, when you see we're going to discuss the grant funds. That we're looking to help augment this for the next few years. Uh it's going to be highly contingent upon the information that comes to us from the US Treasury, Treasury, excuse me. As late as today, funding sources that we are looking for to help us with this. Full-day kin- kindergarten plan from the town. Uh the US Treasury has still not yet released the allocation information, um the requirement information. So that we can know exactly what we can spend that money on. So right now, we're doing our sort of educated assessment. Based on past ex- uh stimulus packages. And what we may be able to use it for or not use it for, so it's highly contingent upon those things. Because we have not received it to date, we had kind of hoped that we would, so we can't really confirm that it will be completely free next year. We need to wait and see. I, I thought it would be out by now. Certainly, most people thought it would be out by now. Without knowing that for sure, we have to plan as if we're not going to be able to use that portion to augment our plan. If we get it, that's fine, and we can um use it going forward. Because it is uh some of the grants you're gonna see expire in two or three years, depending on the grant. But it would be fiscally irresponsible to jump to the conclusion uh and presume that it will be acceptable. Marilyn, um to her credit, is the one who recommended taking this more conservative approach for one year. Right now, we charge three thousand five hundred dollars, which you know has um. Been among the highest in the state and have been running in the red, regar- uh regardless of that fact. What we are proposing now at this point is to decrease that to about a third of that. Which would be one thousand two hundred dollars. Most of the private daycares or kindergartens in the area. Charge more than that per month, so this is hopefully a, a financial relief for many families. Especially in this um particularly trying time with Covid. If we are successful in that first year, then we, our goal, again, our goal is to move to. Full free kindergarten in FY twenty-three. Uh again, please understand that is contingent upon any changes in federal funding, any changes in the economy. But that is our full intention. We believe that now is the time we have to do this. We've never had an opportunity such as using federal stimulus funds to help augment this, so that we can make small incremental increases. That we're hoping will get us right to the opening of the new elementary school. As we've uh discussed before, we're hoping to realize some operational savings there. That we can use that money instead of the federal stimulus funds when it expires. So we're just looking to get to that point and close that gap and ensure that we have equity for all of the children. In Easton. We've already talked about the achievement gaps of full and half-day kindergarten, and we hope to really remediate that issue. With offering full free-day kindergarten. We're in the vast minority of districts in the Commonwealth that don't have free kindergarten. We do know that legislatively, it's being considered to be mandatory. Certainly, we don't want to wait until it's mandatory. Uh this is fully worthy for educational, ethical, and equity issues of happening as soon as possible. So that's why the one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars was added to the quote-unquote rollover. Because that would be part of regular operational labor costs going forward. That brings us to one point four percent total. The next slide shows the projected staff needs. We have discussed for quite some time the need of an English-language learner. Most significantly, we always hire English-language learners as a district employee. So that they move with the cohorts of students, depending where we have the most need for service hours. Right now, pre-K to two is that area. Our kindergarten and pre-kindergarten students are not getting services for uh. Are not getting English-language services, and um we need to provide that early intervention the best we can. To give, ensure their uh future success. the best we can to give, ensure their uh future success. In terms of school nurses, we have two of our nurses, we have eight nurses, two of them are currently point eight or eighty percent. We would like to increase those two positions to uh one point oh F T E or full-time equivalent. That would mean we'd have eight full-time nurses in the district. That has been our goal for quite some time. O A teachers, we have uh eliminated several positions in the last three years, uh dozens. And uh most significantly at all of our aims. What we found is particularly in the science classes, that's where we were, we reduced a position not necessarily because it was the best department, but because there was uh attrition. And we were trying to mitigate the impact in the district as much as possible. However, we're finding that our labs are, are too big and we wanna ensure the utmost safety and ability to complete labs uh as possible. But also, it has cut down on the ability to offer diverse electives to students, which in and of itself is problematic, we certainly want our students to have a, a plethora of choices. But it also makes it difficult when you don't have enough electives. It makes it difficult to keep the sizes of all of the other classes under control. So it actually has uh an outward impact on class sizes overall. So we are looking to increase some part-time employees in art and music. In music, we have um chorus that we don't have a vocal professional there, we're gonna work intensely to try to get one to fill that position as well as show choir. And uh we have some music therapy needs in the district, so we met with Mr. Benson, uh we met with him again today, actually. And he's working on that. In terms of a learning specialist and instructional coach, that is for, respectively, that's for special education deficits, but also uh general education achievement gaps due to uh Covid, due to social emotional needs, due to the remote learning environment this year. So this is a, it's reactive to address Covid concerns, but it's proactive by putting these place, putting these in place as we begin the next school year to try to get any student that may need additional help back on track as we start the school year um and get them on a trajectory to success. And then finally, we've talked extensively about the lack of health and wellness education in our schools. We have one health professional at the high school, one at the middle school, and that's it. So we're looking to really maximize opportunity on the retirement of a, an, a library aide. And instead, uh students will still, there will still be a library aide at Richardson Olmsted, it will still be part of their specials rotation. But this will give us the opportunity to uh for a very small, uh excuse me, a small amount of money, increase that to a health teacher and provide a health elective for students as well. Again, these are all reactive in nature, none of these uh reflect the creativity and the ideas and the enthusiasm that the staff exhibited in, in trying to determine what their needs were going forward. But uh it, and it doesn't address all of our reactive needs. It doesn't address everything that unfortunately has been cut out in the last three years. But uh these we feel are the most critical at this point, you see, they mostly have to do with physical and mental health and wellness and equity of our students, and we believe that is paramount. That comes out to point six or almost point six-six percent. And then finally, we have some fixed needs that we are realizing need to be shifted into our operational budget as opposed to grants. There are a couple of things that are new, there are some things that are not new lines, but they've taken on a different trajectory now that we've had such significant changes this year with our remote learning and our hybrid learning. So for example, our consumable materials, we do need to augment that, there were many things that could not be shared and we need to replace those as we begin the next school year. Uh not being shared, of course, because of social distancing and Covid concerns. The technology budget, we do have technology in our operational budget. We do have technology in our capital request to the town and we do have technology in our grant funding. Because technology is a big part of our district now more than ever. We're looking to make incremental increases to the operational side of the budget for technology because our needs have shifted. And we know we can't do it all in one year and we know the grant funding is gonna be going away. So now, in essence, every student has a device in the district. We literally went to just about a one-to-one initiative essentially overnight or within a month. And this has brought about needs for parts, for labor to service the computers um in real time or if they uh malfunction. This has changed our procurement plan considerably because certainly the use has changed, the usage, there's a big difference between having students go to a technology or computer lab supervised by their teacher working together on an assignment than there is for children as young as literally kindergarten, carrying devices home in a backpack or whatever else, on the bus, uh in a car, in a friend's car, to and from school daily. It's a lot of different use, so our procurement plan had to change. So this is an incremental increase is each year to, to try to get us to keep up with that, because what we don't wanna do is really abuse the opportunity we've been given or to waste the money that has been invested in this. Natural gas is expected to go up, our supply budgets in software, this is again, as a result of having the one-to-one devices, we, we were able to really find and make use of many different software packages from pre-K to twelve that we don't want to go backwards and not use them anymore. Some of the teachers have found them to be invaluable, now feel very comfortable using them. The students have become much more technologically savvy in a very short amount of time. And so uh again, we don't want to lose the opportunity we've been given and we would like to sustain the use of this valuable uh technology. Special education out of district for s- for many years now, I think it even predates my tenure in the district. We have been forced to prepay special education for our out-of-district placements to several hundred thousand dollars a year. That is that can be considered a bit of a game of roulette because you come to a year where you cannot prepay and you have this legal and moral obligation to provide this very expensive service and uh that creates a, a fiscal cliff for the town, certainly for the district. So we're looking to move two hundred thousand dollars of prepayment into the operational budget where it, it really should be to be most responsible. And then finally, we are looking at uh adding a residency officer. It's something we've talked about for quite some time, I am convinced at this point from the amount of work that we have been doing reactively for reports of non-residents um enjoying an Easton public school education. We just don't have the manpower to research this, uh we, every case. And this is, this is actual dollars, this costs the taxpayers quite a bit of money. We wanna be responsible stewards of that tax, those taxpayer dollars. And this investment begins us with a part-time employee to do this if we find that they are able to realize savings like we estimate uh as a part-time person who is reacting to reports of someone who may not be a, a taxpaying resident of Easton. Then we will advance them by u- utilizing those savings to um full-time to proactively look for cases. Uh what I think maybe a lot of people don't realize is that there is, there are provisions in place where, for example, um I'll use one in, inexpensive example. If a special education student has two parents who live in two different towns. If one of the parents lives in, uh just say a neighboring town, Mansfield and the child goes to the Mansfield Public Schools, but the other parent lives in Easton. Uh even if they are a non-custodial parent, that makes Easton responsible for fifty percent of the expenses of that student's placement, which can get very costly. So we, not only do we want to assure that those students do have a parent living in Easton, but we wanna then be able to look at the students that we have with parents in other districts, which is an example of a proactive use of a residency officer, to be sure that they are compensating us appropriately for the child's placement. So that is the final point nine percent and the next slide shows this in sum. The original budget from F Y twenty-one at forty-two point six million, the rollover in labor added to that. The projected reactive needs, projected expense needs brings us to a total budget request of forty-three million nine hundred seventeen thousand six hundred forty-five dollars, which represents a three point zero one percent increase from F Y twenty-one. This is extremely lean, uh this is again, really making the most use out of our federal stimulus funds as possible, you can advance the slide, that's fine, thank you. Which takes us to the grants, which I will discuss in a bit more detail for, for the detail that we have at this point. Before I do that, are there any questions about the budget portion of this, the proposal portion?
Um Dr. Cabral, this is Nancy. So on the first slide, you talked about the full day kindergarten. What is the cost for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two kindergarten going to be?
We want to offer a tuition of one thousand two hundred dollars, which is one-third essentially of what we charge now.
Okay, and you're not expecting it to be free until F Y twenty-three?
We hope for it to be free in F Y twenty-three, I, I also can't guarantee that, it depends on the trajectory of the economy and the stimulus funds, what we can use it for, unfortunately, the Treasury hasn't given us that information yet. But we're gonna stay on top of it and that is absolutely our number one priority.
Okay, thank you, on the second slide, um staff needs, the health teacher at R O. Who will be, who will have health classes or is this still to be determined?
Uh it will be, it, it is to be determined because the students would split between, it's not a full special like phys ed, music or art would be because it, we only have one health teacher, so they can't serve every student. So it will be up to Mr. Getchel and his team to determine which students will be receiving uh part-time library, part-time health.
Okay, thank you, and then um, no, I think that's it for me right now.
Also just adds about the health teacher that um, that Mrs. McCarthy, our depart K through twelve phys ed department head also has wonderful ideas and she's been working very collaboratively with um Mr. Getchel on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, they've been great, uh the reason we don't know yet is because they keep coming up with some really creative ideas and we don't wanna stop that thinking, so we're, we're letting them continue to work in that way and we'll support them in any way we can, they're really making the most out of really an underfunded, uh excuse me, an under um staffed area.
Well, and it's been understaffed for a very long time, as you know, so this is, that's a good step in the right direction. I cannot see everybody, so I don't know who else has a question, so if somebody can just talk. Sorry, speak out and ask your question, cuz I can't see anybody. Okay, I guess you can continue, Dr. Cabral.
Hey, thank you. So we are receiving federal stimulus funds, I think it is very important for the community to understand what we're getting and where. What it can be used for, what it cannot be used for. This is uh essentially in order of what has been awarded to the town or the school department. We have not received all of this, however, we're eligible for it through the town, for example, the CARES Act which came out first, that was the first stimulus package, remote learning tech essentials, which was really um instrumental in us securing almost a million or maybe over a million dollars of technology when you count the cameras and such that were purchased for remote learning. The uh state C V prevention fund, um federal relief fund certainly S R one, two and three, which do come directly to the district. S R two was more than S R one, S R three was more than S R two, and the American Rescue Plan Act, which is on the town side. That is what we don't have information about just yet, the last two, S R three and the American Rescue Plan Act. These are the largest allocation of funds to this point and the ones we have the least amount of information on. So it's really difficult for us to make these plans and determine, for example, final tuition numbers, final staffing numbers without having it, so that's why we're tending on, or we're trending on the more conservative side of this. And uh we'll talk about the figures for each of these on the next slide. Oh, excuse me, before we talk about the figures, I'll go over what we've expended these funds on to date. Certainly, the lion's share of it was on Chromebooks and, or different kinds of Chromebooks for, whether for staff for secondary students all the way down to literally kindergarten. That was uh quite uh our, our, easily our biggest expense. Tech interns, clearly, we did not have enough people on staff, uh we're still, again, understaffed in that area. But we, for the first time, we had uh several tech interns from local colleges, universities who were working with us for a, a modest salary in getting the Chromebooks prepared, repaired, uh sent out, collected, distributed, so forth. We also recently had retirements in that area and were able to bring on board two of the interns who had been working with us, who had done a really wonderful job and now they're two technology personnel in our, in our district. Assessments, uh we had to purchase quite a bit of assessments, both because of the, the contact and not being able to share items amongst students, but also the online assessments. When students are fully remote or they are hybrid, we had to move to the online assessments, which are costly. Mental health supports, both for students and staff, internet enhancements and hotspots and video equipment. Those three things were, the enhancements are in the form of our infrastructure. Again, we were simply unprepared to maybe more than quadruple our number of devices in a month. So we had to augment our security, uh internet security as well as our infrastructure. We also purchased hotspots for students where we were required, but of course wanted to anyway be sure that every student who was remote or working hybrid was able to get online. We have some students who don't have reliable internet access and we were able to provide them hotspots so they could participate equitably. The, the video equipment, we had several cameras mounted in classrooms as people probably realize from the remoting in that took place up to this point, actually, during the school year. Wherever they were not available or weren't really working very properly on uh actual Chromebooks. The software, again, over two hundred thousand dollars just on software this year. If we think of pre-K to twelve, every grade level, every level within a grade level, every subject. General education, special education, special services, all of these had to learn how to operate either hybrid or remotely, and so it required a great deal of software. Teacher preparation and professional development to even get ready for working in a, a, a virtual platform which essentially no one had done before. And the most recent purchase were all of the desks that we discussed that were necessary, particularly for cafeterias. Because most of our cafeterias have long or round tables in them, which is just not um a- able to be used, it's not allowable under current Covid guidelines. So we had to buy individual desks for those larger spaces so that children could have lunch at six feet apart. That is all, uh or those are all of the major expenses that came from our grants in the Easton Public Schools. The town's grants, most specifically the CARES Act funds, are where we applied for, again, more technology. Ventilation upgrades, those were eligible under CARES. We had high-quality fi- filters put in, we bought air purifiers for every space in every building. Certainly, our cleaning suppo- supplies, we, it was Certainly our cleaning sup- supplies, we, it was necessary for us to buy many electrostatic sprayers. Because it was just impossible for us to clean such large spaces so frequently and so quickly, uh. By hand with 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 the custodians, so the electrostatic sprayers were really critical to our operations. P P E or personal protective equipment in the form of masks, certainly for the nurses, we had gowns, extra thermometers. Masks, visors, partitions, um. All of these things were eligible under CARES, and then in terms of labor, we had additional nurses, we had three this year. Uh, helping us to cope with the overload of cases to the nurse's office and overtime for custodians. Again, for that deep cleaning, but also to get the regularly scheduled projects done. When so much time was spent on cleaning our facilities so regularly. So these are the things that we have spent our grant funds on so far. In terms of grants coming up, you'll see on the following two spreadsheets that we are required. These are some of the requirements we have under the grant funds that we've recently received, for example, summer school or extended school year. That is twenty percent of our most recently received grant, the S R Fund Three. Has to be spent on summer school, we believe we may even need to spend more than that, but I'll get to that in a minute. Interventionists, again, we have to think of this in two or even three year increments because some of these grants. Go to FY twenty two, uh, go to FY twenty three. And you're going to see how we're slowly trying to wean off of that by adding to the operational budget. When you see things like seventeen interventionists in grant funds in FY twenty two, but eight interventionists. In the grant funds for FY twenty three. We also have, we also have a requirement to spend a percentage on gap. Uh, achievement gap closing and credit recovery, and so we're working on an after school study skills program for all of our aims to make sure that students are able to. Uh, again, get back on track. Then, of course, D D O S hotspots and then the software, again, for two years, you're gonna see it slowly weaning. In, uh, the spreadsheet that I show you and, excuse me, on the right side of your screen, we have to ensure equity. In the best of times, this is difficult, but when we have had this very unusual year year. We wanna make sure that the gains are not exponentially higher, depending on. Uh, socio economic status or race or any other factor and we wanna make sure that we are. Um, looking at that independently through a diversity consultant and we address any shortcomings immediately. Student and staff mental health is a priority, again, it's reactive because it's for COVID. But it's proactive in the sense that we wanna have this in place at the beginning of the school year as we assess. Where everybody's at, what is the starting point and where can we get them from there? Professional development, special education testing and evaluations, um, again. Assessing where students are at after this extraordinary year that they've had. In terms of the goals on their individual I E Ps and how can we move them forward? And then again, incremental decreases in grant funding from FY twenty two to FY twenty three. As we hopefully are able to move those expenses over to the operating budget. The next slide is, uh, a spreadsheet of expenses. This shows on the left hand side, the grants, the, uh, there's one additional grant on here, a two seven four grant, only because. That is for some professional development that we just weren't able to offer this year, we didn't have the time. Or the opportunity to offer additional professional development to staff that was already overtaxed and getting the professional development in other areas. So we're rolling that over. You can see the end date, excuse me, the end date for these grants, obviously, our goal is to expend them in the order that they expire. But every grant is very specific in what you are able to spend it on and what you aren't. As well as the narrative that we provide, once we determine what we wanna use those fund that fund for. It is not easily changed, that is then becomes our goal and we have to move in that direction, so. You can see that we have grants that end all the way in, uh, twenty twenty four, which will be here before we know it. And hopefully, again, that's what we were looking toward, that last year. Those last two funds, the S R three and the A R P, that's what we're counting on to get us. Through that last year of the transition to, uh, to full free day kindergarten, in addition. To the economy withholding, uh, withstanding us adding two hundred thousand to the operating budget every year. However, those are the exact two that we do not have all of the grant information for just yet. The federal government hasn't, uh, released that yet. So on the third column, you can see what we've spent to date, the CARES Act, while it was two point two million for the town. The district was able to secure one point one five million. For all of the expenditures I explained on the prior slides. The same is true of, uh, the the tech essentials was completely expended, that was very easy. With all of our technology needs, that does not go, uh, as far as you would think, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would go. Coronavirus Prevention Fund, again, for things like cleaning and P P E. That, um. I'm moving you because you're blocking my columns. Uh, that has a a very small amount left in it and then. The next fund has been completely expended again, that those were all the slides I showed you prior. S R one, two and three, we are showing you, it looks fabulous, like, nope, back, sorry. It looks fabulous, ca- can you see my cursor here? Because it looks like here we have over one and a half million dollars that we can use going forward and gosh, why can't we just make? Uh, free kindergarten next year, that just looks like so much money and that's great, um, but as you can see. They are expended across three school years, we have to. Have a plan to do this incrementally and not all at once, because if you do it all at once in the first year. Then you don't have it in the second year, so we are gonna show you on the next slide how we have. Initially planned out the use of these funds for the next three years. If you look at the first columns in white, you will see that. Uh, the grants are listed across the top, and if you see the columns on the left hand side here, you will see that summer school. We have twenty percent that needs to be. Can you see my cursor? Oh, I didn't know why we had two curses in there, sorry. We have two hundred and sixteen thousand there because that's twenty percent of the amount that. We hope to receive, haven't yet received, but expect to receive from the government. We anticipate it may be more than that, we typically have about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in our operating budget each year. For extended school year or the special education program and. Last year, we had about a hundred and sixty students in that, this year, we have, uh, closer to two hundred and forty. That are interested in participating with about ninety five of ninety five percent of the responses in. So we expect that cost to double, which would be the entirety of this. However, in addition, we are also required as part of summer school to provide. Opportunities for general education students, so this, we don't believe, uh, hopefully, this with. The one hundred and fifteen thousand that's in the operating budget will be enough. But we are actually not sure, so that's why I have a red box about that around that, because that's the minimum. We would spend and, uh, it is possible it will go over that. The next line for interventionists, you can see that seventeen in FY twenty two. We have allocated to the S R two line and in FY twenty three, decreasing that to two hundred thousand. Both by eliminating some of those positions because, again, they are reactive for closing achievement gaps. And if they're successful, we will lose some of those positions, but also moving some of those expenses, again, incrementally into the operating budget. For kindergarten FY twenty two, we plan to use three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars from S R three. And then in FY twenty three, two hundred thousand dollars, again, slowly decreasing the amount we're getting from the. Uh, grants. The technology, we are gonna be taking from S R one, that expires on September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. So that's where that funding is coming from and software from twenty twenty three would then come from S R three. And I. We're missing a line on this chart, so I'm gonna have to show you that in a minute, but. Summer professional development, that would all come from the summer rollover that we have, and then student mental health, the reason that is also. In a red box is because that's the minimum required in that grant is ten thousand dollars, but again, we anticipate. That it would be more than that. These items in pink, staff mental health, the O A after school program I discussed. Special education testing and evaluation and diversity consultant have not yet been put into this chart. Because they actually exceed the bottom line for each grant. So we are trying to work creatively now to determine how we might be able to have those four items, because we consider them. Critical to going forward and then these bottom. Seven items are all things, they're over here on the right hand side, under the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan. Because these are all things that would qualify us to receive. This allocation from the town's grant receipt. And they have been extremely, extremely supportive in this regard, as I explained, we've already expended one point one million. Out of the two point two million that the town received for CARES. Um, the American Rescue Plan is over two million dollars, it's about two point four million dollars, again, for the town. So that's for all departments, um, again, there's some lack of clarity there because. Half of those funds, so another two point four million, was actually sent in Massachusetts was. For different reasons, was sent to the counties as opposed to the individual municipalities. So Bristol County actually has a matching amount from each community in the county. They have not yet determined or shared how they intend to spend that money. We, of course, are hoping that they separate it and allocate it to the municipalities. If they do, that would ascend, that would actually double the amount of money that the town is receiving. To over four million, almost five million dollars, we don't know that yet, that is a huge difference and so. That's why some of these items in pink, we're waiting, because we don't know, first of all, if the town will be getting that money. And second of all, we don't know the parameters for those grants to see if these are eligible under that grant funding. So we're in a bit of limbo here on some of these items and this is why some of this information was missing in the first. Grant, uh, excuse me, the first budget presentation, because we've just tried up until today. Um, we still do not have that information, what we've done, of course, is we've consulted. Legal professionals, we've consulted economists, we've read lots of opinions on what they think is gonna happen. Based on historical and longitudinal data, anecdotal evidence, but we really don't know exactly what to anticipate and the least. The least clarity of all is surrounding that, uh, two, almost two and a half million dollars that the Bristol County has. Um, sort of earmarked, if you will, for Easton, so that's, that's quite a a big sum for us. So, uh, unfortunately, you can't see it on this chart, it was, uh, cut off, I'm sorry to say, but. When you, uh, see the bottom line, which of course is the most important part of this chart, you see that here underneath the one hundred and thirty two thousand. With these anticipated expenditures, that actually leaves us with twenty thousand five hundred and forty dollars there. Under the four hundred and thirty five, uh, when we expend that amount, that leaves us with. Thirty eight thousand five hundred and thirteen in that line. And for S R, this great big ticket grant. When we add these expenditures, it leaves us with only fifty three thousand one hundred and seventy seven dollars. So this is where our, uh, concerns lie, is that, you know, just on this spreadsheet alone. We have essentially expended this million and a half dollars just on these really critical, um, these really critical. Areas and, um, might seem like we have a million five sitting there, but. As you can see, the the vast majority of it has already been allocated for our plans going forward. Very valuable and worthy items to be sure and we're extremely, extremely thankful to to have it. Wouldn't have been able to do without it, however, um, we aren't sitting on one point five million dollars right now. Um, we consider this, um, encumbered, if you will, uh, over the next three years. And we still have these items in pink to contend with, um. That will not be covered by the remaining one hundred and eleven thousand dollars, um, from the grant funds. So it is good news, um, it is. Hopefully better if we find out that Bristol County is going to, um, allocate that money or even a portion of that money to the town. But again, we don't, we don't know that just yet, so that's where the funds have been expended, that's the plan. For the funds going forward, we don't know about any other funding that will be coming our way. But certainly, we will keep you informed if it does. And I believe that's the last slide and can answer any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? Jackie, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Dr. Cabral, for that presentation and thank you for, um, explaining, um, all the grants. That we have received, we're hoping to receive and what it's been used for, I think that was actually very helpful, um, at least for me. Um, I just have a question about, um, the sped at a district, two hundred thousand dollars. That you said we were moving into the, um, operating budget, wait, is that coming, where is that coming from? Is that coming from a grant, where's that money coming from?
No, that's part of our three percent request of the town.
Okay.
Three point zero one percent. So that it will be part of our operating budget going forward, because it's, uh, it's, it is a risk to prepay those funds. Those are real funds that we're aware, uh, we pay well over a million dollars a year on that. So, uh, we know that those funds will be expended, but we have been prepaying to try to assist us going forward in years when there might be money. To do that and, uh, this is, this would be moving it to the operational budget, the part of three point zero one percent.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Cabral? Jen, go ahead.
Um, on the last slide that we went through, and I apologize if you explained this earlier and I missed it, the D D O S. Is that the, like, the the server traffic attack thing, that technology?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And so the fourteen thousand four hundred, what is that buying us, is that protection for?
Cyber attack.
Time and and how long?
Security, yeah, uh, so there will be a yearly fee, um, however, the initial startup is the, is the cost. Now it's worked into the technology budget going forward, but it's the initial cost of, um, transferring all of the servers and everything. That has been completed, I don't know if people are aware, um, in the media outlets recently, there have been, you know. These criminals are savvy, if they would use their power for good versus evil, they're well aware that we're all. Far more rely, uh, relying far more on technology now and that every school virtually has had to go to a remote platform. And so they are maximizing the opportunity and attacking and freezing records, deleting files of school systems. Making it impossible to log into systems, communicate online, wiping out access to emails, records, et cetera, so. Um, we felt we needed to move in this area, I have colleagues that have paid. Sadly, have resorted to paying ransoms that are more than this total, just to have access to their own information, so. Uh, this is a proactive feature, we did not, we have not been attacked, I will say that. According to our technology director, John Souza, we are, uh, there are attempted attacks every single day. From around the world, China, Russia, even within the United States, so, um, he's been working on that, that you, you know, in that area. You always have to stay one step ahead and so this is us attempting to stay a step ahead.
Okay, great, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Oh, Jackie, Jackie.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to just make sure everyone knew that we had, um, Dr. Cabral presented this, uh, budget. To the joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the Select Board yesterday, so, um, the town is aware of where we stand with our budget as well. Just wanted to make sure everyone knew that.
Thank you, Jen, go ahead.
Uh, one more question, so the seventeen interventionist for fiscal twenty two. And the eight for fiscal twenty three that we're using grant funding for, that's. Over and above the learning specialist and instructional coaches. That are in the reactive operating budget, just want to clarify that.
That's correct, what we don't wanna do is put full time or, uh, union staff in a grant. Uh, because they are finite, um, and, and also actually, uh, another. Item that most people don't know is that when you put a unit member who's part of M T R S in a grant. You have to pay the nine percent M T R S out of the grant, so it actually takes more of your grant funding for that purpose, so. Uh, so we don't. We endeavor whenever we can to not put full time staff in there, so those are part of the operating budget. And you can see that the positions here are, uh, part time or, uh, temporary staff.
Okay, great, thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions? All right, so thank you, Dr. Cabral, again, you, you've done this, you must dream about this budget in your sleep, you've presented it so many times.
Dreams, nightmares, I don't know.
Well, whatever, it all the same. All right, so, uh, we need to vote on this, so do I have a motion to approve? The F Y twenty two budget as presented by Dr. Cabral.
O'Neil, so moved.
And do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Rance, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. Number ten, district updates, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So we're gonna, Mrs. Pruitt and I are gonna tag team here a little bit because we're gonna be providing some COVID information. Excuse me. Uh, one of the questions that I had received from a school committee member was about the percentage of students who are remaining remote. For the rest of the school year. Right now, in pre K to five, we have a total of sixty three students who are gonna remain remote. In that category, there are a total of over fourteen hundred students, so that's a total of four percent. In grade six to twelve, we have a total of a hundred and sixty six students that are remaining remote. That category has nineteen hundred and ninety eight students in it, so it's a total of eight percent. Then, um, I do want to just update you a little bit on the travel guidance. For after vacations due to COVID. We are not recommending a change to. What you have already voted on and, and showed support for, I will just provide a little bit of updated information. Not only, uh, I, I, first of all, I have to compliment the committee on your conservative approach, um. In retrospect, it was absolutely the way to go, and the data has borne that to be true. There has been a spike not only in the country and the state, but Easton is also increasing every week for the past month. And the school system has also increased steadily. Not only do we see an increase in cases, but we see a vast increase. In close contacts, and I'll have Mrs. Pruitt talk more specifically about that in a little bit, but. I have spoken to the, um, school nurses again. The E E A again, and to Mrs. Kennedy again, to say, you know, in light of recent questions we've received. In light of conversations that have taken place and in light of the information you are privy to, what is your updated recommendation? Mrs. Kennedy actually is the, is the person who made the comment that your conservative approach. Had, is serving us well at this point. Um, and that her opinion would, uh, change because of the change in data from the opinion that she gave us prior. The nurses are steadfast in their opinion, uh, one hundred percent of them. That there should be a quarantine after vacation. Again, I wanna note that our eight full time nurses are not only medical professionals. But they are the only medical professionals. Anywhere that have access to real time data on our students' cases on a regular basis. So we have medical professionals giving us advice, but they don't have access to those confidential documents. And we have people, Chrissy and I, who are. Familiar with the confidential documents, but we don't have the medical background. So these professionals, um, who I highly respect, and I know are highly respected in the community. Um, absolutely feel that it is warranted and recommend that we continue. They did ask me to note that, you know, they received several questions, uh, challenges from parents about this. Saying that that is a presumption that travel is not necessarily safe. Uh, the nurses just wanted me to point out that they're not suggesting that travel is essentially unsafe. Certainly if someone's going to their house with their family only. Um, however, the behaviors and, um, the activities that are inherent with travel. I E eating out, perhaps using public transportation, et cetera, are, um, riskier. For transmission or exposure, they just are, and so. Um, so that's their recommendation, and then the E E A, again, uh, I spoke with their leadership. E E A being the teacher paraprofes- excuse me, teacher paraprofessional. And, uh, middle management union. And they just highlighted the fact that, you know, they've tried to be extremely cooperative in accommodating to parents. It is not the same thing to continue remote learning when all of the students are back in the classroom. And only eight percent are now remote, it isn't the same thing, it's a lot more difficult, and I acknowledge that as a professional educator. However. They, uh, agreed that they would do that because they wanna encourage parents to please help keep them safe. And be responsible by quarantining after vacation. They wanna make it possible for your children to continue their education remotely. Uh, even though it creates, excuse me, a burden on their practice. And so, uh, again, their concern clearly is self preservation. And for the care of the students that they serve and love, they wanna make sure that we're keeping everybody safe. And so I would add that my, uh, unequivocal recommendation is that we stay exactly where we are and have a quarantine after vacation. For those that are, um, are tempted perhaps to compare us with other districts. It, as in all other matters, I would encourage you not to do that, we are not all other districts, we have different needs, resources, information, and so forth. Other districts right now, we have neighboring districts that are going fully remote now. Because of challenges that they're facing, we are trying to avoid that. And so for those reasons and more, uh, we wanna make sure that we're keeping everybody safe. I feel as though we've done a very good job to this point, and it hasn't been easy on anyone. And I certainly regret any inconvenience to anyone by having to quarantine for a maximum of six school days. But, uh, we are gonna recommend that we go forward in this way. And that is not based only on, um, medical information, it's based on the fact that. There's an educational component to this as well. And the, the, there's no, um, we don't believe there's an educational risk to a student who's working remotely or is going to get makeup work for absences. And, um, we have a very, very unique environment that would be very difficult for non educators to understand. Even if they're educators in other districts, it's not Easton, and so I would, um. I hope that we will be supported in this decision, I hope people that will, will understand this is not out of fear. I feel as though we've been very level headed and data driven in all of our decisions this year so far. And, um. We are always welcoming suggestions and recommendations to improve ourselves. While that will continue, this particular item, I, um, would like to put to rest at this time. With the knowledge that we will revisit it once we see the data warrants doing that. The last thing I'd like to say before I kick it over to Mrs. Pruitt is that, um, we. Are seeing that our largest. Challenges are for close contacts are sports, um, we did say that, of course, when we were talking. With Mister, um, when we were talking to Mister Matthews, uh. Not the spread of the virus, but certainly close contacts. And when you hear the numbers of students out, it, it is of course concerning because they are missing parts of their education, which again, will make it up. But we are encouraging people, please be cautious, please, please remain vigilant. Mister Matthews also talked about COVID fatigue. We're all there, we're living through the same trauma and the same crisis. We don't wanna give up now. I really believe we're very, very close, literally a month to six weeks away. If we can just stay steadfast in our commitment to one another, uh, in our, in our social consciousness with one another. I really think that we'll be far more successful. In, um, getting through this without any major changes to programming or how we're delivering instruction for the remainder of the school year. I'd also want to say very respectfully, this is not a criticism, I say it with the utmost respect. But I'm asking parents to please support us when it comes to reporting that you have been on vacation. We strive every day to make sure that we're teaching lessons to your children about social responsibility. And justice and fairness and following the rules and being part of a civilized society. One action that contradicts that from a trusted adult can really have devastating consequences. On what we're trying to reinforce with your children. Asking them to not disclose that they've been on vacation, sending them to school when they have been on vacation. I assure you, our professionals will do everything necessary to make sure that your children are up to speed in their class. And have all of the information they need to continue successfully for the remainder of the school year. Please help us to show our kids that we're partners in their education and in their care and in their well being. That we're all looking out for them the same, and that, um, we're cooperative in how we provide this education to our kids. And I know there have been some specific questions about exceptions to the travel rules, and so I will explain what those are. One is if a, an adult or, um. If at the time of the vacation, before the end of the school year, anyone, um, of a certain age is able to get a vaccination. If they are two weeks. After their last dose, so two weeks after their dose of Johnson and Johnson. Or two weeks after their second dose of Pfizer or Moderna. If they provide that documentation to the school nurse, they do not need to test after returning from travel. Also, if a student has had COVID. If it is more than ten days. From the end of their COVID isolation. But less than ninety days from when they were diagnosed. They do not need to test after travel. And again, that documentation just needs to be provided to the school nurse. There's a further question about twenty four hours out of the state. We are obviously in very close proximity to states like Connecticut, Rhode Island. And similarly to places like New Hampshire and Vermont that we could travel to and be back within twenty four hours. Certainly, I would. Like to hear your thoughts about that, I do not feel as though we have a significant concern. About twenty four hour travel, um, in that way. Going to dinner in Rhode Island, for example, um, as long as parents and students are remaining vigilant. In the practices that we've taught them in schools. Uh, but certainly, if you'd like to weigh in on that, it is not something that we have, uh, publicized yet because that's a rather. Recent development with the change of the mandate to an advisory at the state level. And, uh, those are the only exceptions to the travel rule. Traveling anywhere outside of Massachusetts, we are maintaining that students who return. Must be tested with a P C R test, no earlier than five days of returning to Massachusetts. And providing those test results to the school nurse. If they are negative and there are no symptoms, the student can return to school on day eight. If the student chooses not to test or the parent chooses not to have their child tested. If they have no symptoms, they can return on day eleven. And then regardless, in those two situations, we encourage parents to watch their child for symptoms. For a full fourteen days from their return, uh, from travel and notify the school nurse if they exhibit, exhibit any of the COVID like symptoms that are listed in our playbook. Um, if there are no questions for me, or if you wanna wait until the end of this, we can have Mrs. Pruitt contribute, Mrs. DeLuca.
I just, I, cuz you were on this topic earlier. I just wanna, uh, tell our audience that we, the school committee was supposed to meet with the Board of Health jointly. Um, it did not happen because of a scheduling conflict, conflict, some people weren't available. So, um, as a new meeting possibly comes, uh, to fruition, we'll let you know, but. We did try to put one together and it just didn't happen, so know that we're still in touch or. Dr. Cabral is still in touch with the Board of Health and keeps us informed, so thank you very much.
And I also wanna note that I know that there was a Board of Health member who had many questions. Uh, I reached out to him, we spoke for, uh, a, a good amount of time, and I believe I answered all of his questions and concerns. If he has any further, certainly I have encouraged him to reach out to me and he has not, so. I think we were able to answer specific concerns, but certainly, meeting together is perfectly fine, but. The protocol to this point has been for their representative to meet with your representative. Which would mean Mrs. Kennedy, myself, and Mrs. Pruitt has been part of those conversations as well. Again, we literally talk every day, and so we, um, we use that information.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Go ahead, Caroline.
My understanding was that the reason we weren't able to meet as originally planned was that it was actually. Board of Health personnel that were not able to meet with us, I, I just kind of wanted to clarify that we were. All of the school committee and our administration were able to meet at that date, it was not, um, you know, the postponement was made necessary by some. Um, inability of. Members of the Board of Health to meet.
Right, thank you. Uh, Jen?
Um, Dr. Cabral, I just want, you mentioned in talking to the E E A. They agreed to, uh, offering remote after vacation, I just wanna clarify, is that still just six to twelve?
Thank you, yes, that is for grades six to twelve only, we, I don't recommend it for grades K to five. The staff is not amenable to that, and I don't blame them, I believe that that is more of a safety concern. To have young students in class twenty or more and be, um, working with students remotely. I also don't think that it actually provides the best possible option for remote students. Whereas now we have remote staff working with the students and they have the teachers undivided attention, so we believe that. That is best for our students right now in, uh, pre K through grade five, thank you for that clarification, that was important. That is best for our students right now in uh pre-K through grade five. Thank you for that clarification, that was important.
Any other questions right now? Okay, uh Chrissy, I guess it's to you.
Thank you. So I just wanna state that, you know, when I, when I come to work every day. I um. I leave my house of my two children and my husband. Um my husband and I have relocated. We, we are. We, we didn't grow up in Massachusetts. We grew up in, I grew up in New Jersey, my husband grew up in New York. Our families are far away. If anyone understands the importance of traveling, it is me. Um my, I haven't been able to see my family. It's my father's seventy-fifth birthday today. I can't go see him this weekend. Um you know, because, because of the restrictions that we have. I've talked to my parents, I've said to them, we're doing it this summer when we can, when our kids, when the kids are out of school, even if I'm fully vaccinated. My kids, you know, they, they have to um, they, they won't be able to uh, to, to travel. Because of the, the restrictions that, that their, that their schools have in place. And the reason I'm, I'm sharing that is because I need everyone to understand the ramifications that it has. Just this week, we have welcomed back our K through five students, full-time. All students with less than six feet distancing, as you know. In most cases, we are at three feet. The CDC has not changed their guidance on how to identify. Close contacts. That still remains with six feet of distance. Just this week, and this week is from Thursday to Wednesday, as that's how it is reported through DESI. The numbers of um, of students that, or, or staff members that have contracted COVID. We have identified from Thursday to Wednesday, from April first to April seventh. Fifty-six students that are close contacts. Fifty-six students that cannot come to school because of a positive case. If this was the, the case prior, you know, just a few weeks ago. That number would be minimal compared to the, the number of fifty-six because our um. Our distance was at six feet, which, which would have said that they were not close contacts. We don't even have our middle school and high school back yet, wh- full-time within six, within six feet. That occurs the day after vacation. So. Heaven help us if, if one person tests positive, you know, one student, we have the range. I have the data right here. We have a range of um four close contacts to twenty-six close contacts identified. Think of a student, uh you know, if we just use a number like seven, who, who has uh seven close contacts in a classroom. Then times that by seven classes at the high school. We're looking at forty-nine potential close contacts for one individual. Being, being positive, which means that forty-nine students, just for one student being positive. Would have to um work remotely for their quarantine time. This is, I'm sharing this data because it has amazed me. In two days, so yesterday and today, we have already identified sixteen close contacts. So that number of fifty-six, now add on fifteen, those are the amount of students that we have at home. This to me is extremely concerning um as a parent. You know, I, I am on a thread of texts with my friends in the town that I live in, and they are, you know. Rambling on about, about the number of close contacts, and I tell them all the time, this is real, this is happening. Um I'm very concerned about transmission occurring potentially in school with, with the limited number of spacing. I have been one, you know, that has, that, you know, has been more like, oh, we'll get through this, it'll be okay. But these next few weeks are a big concern to me, and I just wanted to share my urgency with everyone. Because um this, this is, we're, we're ending the year with a bang, that's, that's for sure. And while there is a lot of hope out there and we're excited about the potential of the vaccination and. Uh the, you know, the vaccination opportunities and all of that, um we are also extremely concerned. The, the, the last thing too is that April twenty-sixth for, for our secondary students coincides with the beginning of sports. So if all of these students are quarantined, they won't be able to participate in sports. We are also looking at potential opportunities for our, our music students to perform. Um with, with some of the openings and the, and the spacing. This will limit their performances as well. So these are some of the, the things that we're faced with. We're, we're trying. To provide these, these opportunities for our students to get back to normal. Um but I'm just asking everyone to hang in there, hang in there. We have eight more weeks to go. Once vacation comes, and if, you know, after vacation, and if you can try to make it through. Just for, for the sake of the kids and the, and our staff, I'm begging you, because this is, this is a huge concern. The, the number of students that we are having to send home um or, or I, or um. Notify because of the close contacts, that this is, it's, it's very concerning.
Just two other con- contextual details, uh. What I was actually starting to say before is that the largest number of close contacts is through sports. We certainly try to minimize that as much as possible, even though it's not viral contagion. But the number one spreader for viruses is families right now. We are finding that this ha- is has been actually, this is not new. It has been ripping through families. And so when families contend that they're just going on vacation with their family, or they're just going to be. With their um, you know, closest family members uh that they haven't seen in a while. What we're seeing in terms of viral spread is happening in families. Uh that's our number one spreader event in this district. Are the families. And so, you know, one child is a close contact from. An event or a social, a social gathering, and they spread it to their entire family. Um and we have seen uh that this week. Um I also wanna point out that in my own personal life. I have had many people I see in the bank, at a store, come up and try to embrace me, you know, oh, it's been so long and I'm. I'm thinking, uh and I say, oh, well, hold on a second, we're not there yet. And to a person. Uh they've all said to me, I'm good, I'm good, I've got my vaccines. I've been vaccinated. Uh it's extremely poor, important for people to understand that that is not a get out of free card. Uh get out of jail free card. We have seen in Easton, I am aware. Of three cases of people who were two weeks after being fully vaccinated, getting COVID. Uh in addition, we have uh, you know, medical conjecture that you are still a carrier. Or can be a carrier, if, even if you are fully vaccinated. So please just keep these facts in mind. I am not saying anything. As though I am a medical authority, but I can read and I can see the statistics in our own schools. And both are telling us very clearly that we just need to be careful. We're not trying to be doom and gloom. We're not fear mongers. We're realists. We are very hopeful and encouraged. And si- in our saying frequently that we will get through this, and we're excited that that time is coming. But it's just a, a few weeks away, that's all. And we're hoping that people can push through the fatigue. And get us to the point where we can successfully celebrate together. Uh this summer and in the fall.
And I, I also wanna add that the reason for the high number of particular students is because we're also contact tracing on the bus. So as you know, there's more students on the bus now. Uh we do have seating charts, so we're able to identify who those close contacts are. Um the Lucini has been wonderful, our bus company, with helping us track because we need to make sure that they've been on the bus for. A cumulative fifteen minutes um or more before we identify any close contacts, so they've been able to help us with that. Um but this, this is, this is real, and like Doctor Cabral said, I, I do not want to. Put fear in anybody, that is the last thing we wanna do, but this, these are real numbers. This is, I'm, I'm starting to track the. The close contacts now because it is, it is literally amazing me at how many students we are having to. To notify to stay home because they're identified as close contacts. I didn't anticipate this.
Alright, thank you. Does anyone on the committee have questions for either Doctor Cabral or Chrissy Pruitt? Jackie?
I'm, I'm still a little, I guess, confused about the, the twenty-four hour rule exception, so. That has not been one of our exceptions in the playbook to date, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Jackie, can you repeat that? Question, sorry.
Yeah, so the, the twenty-four hour or being out of state less than twenty-four hour rule. That was um one of the exceptions. That's, that currently is not an exception in our playbook, is that correct?
It's not in our playbook at all. We haven't, we haven't updated that, so we're going to update that.
Is that gonna be part of it, or are we not, like, I'm, I'm not still unsure.
No, we are recommending that it is part of it, but if you have strong opposition, we can discuss it, but we're recommending it's part of it, and we'll add it to our. Our playbook.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to, you know, cuz I've received several questions about that, and I just wasn't sure, so I just wanted to confirm.
Uh Jen, you had a question?
Uh yeah, it was actually the same question, just wanted clarification on the twenty-four hour exemption. And I have no objection to it. It seems reasonable to allow families to, you know, do day trips to Rhode Island to go to the zoo or, you know. To do whatever. Yeah, totally reasonable.
Alright, any other questions? Okay, alright, um public comment, make sure that if you're sending in a, a Q and A. That you put your name and address, please, and if a question's already been asked and answered, then. Uh Mrs. Pruitt will not read it, so. But you could send in another question if you need, you know, valid. Another response or another question. Okay, alright, Mrs. Pruitt, you are up.
Okay, so the first question is from Rachel Spector to Roger Road. When discussing equity and diversity, specifically the consultant Doctor Cabral mentioned, is attention being called to neurodiversity? In my experience, this tends to get grouped in with special education. I'm curious if neurodiversity is considered in the same manner as socioeconomic status or such. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. That's a great question. Um as I'm sure you're aware, um this uh. Neurodiversity is not uh this, the um results of a diagnosis, and so it wouldn't be necessarily considered special education. Uh but yes, it is part of um our attention.
The next question or statement is from Jim Dean, twenty Galahad Way, Way. It seems like we're focusing on the wrong data while close contact data have gone up. The amount of healthy children back in school far outweigh the amount of students who would be struggling at home if we remained in hybrid. Close contact data is not the right data to look at because we know transmission in school is extremely rare. We need to look at the number of students who are actually sick, not close contacts. All that is doing is painting a negative picture. Of the otherwise very positive and healthy environment and situation we currently have. Nearly ninety percent of our students are back in learn, back in school learning. These same students were not learning in the hybrid model. We shouldn't be scared of close contact data because fifty-plus students working remotely is nothing compared to the, the, the. To the destruction we were doing to over fifty percent of our student population. Let's focus on the positive.
So uh I realize that's not a question, but um Mister Dean, I, I'm sorry if you missed it, but before Mrs. Pruitt talked about the. Close contact or, or CPC, close personal contact information, we did talk about the fact that um. The cases in the schools and in the town are increasing and have been for the last month. Um so we are talking about those cases. Uh that was uh an additional conversation that Mrs. Pruitt added about close contacts. And um to your point, Mrs. Pruitt, uh just to, to summarize one piece of what Mrs. Pruitt had said. Um again, I'm not, I'm, I apologize if you joined us lately and, and didn't see it. You may wanna go back and, and watch that part. Uh but she did note that we had fifty-plus students as close contacts. And, excuse me, grades six to twelve are still at six foot distancing. And so her point being, if one student is out and has twenty, I think one student had twenty-seven contacts. That would be times seven or more for a student in the high school. So we can potentially have hundreds of students out as close contacts. To your point, I believe, I certainly don't want to infer your meaning, but it sounds to me as though you find remote learning. Uh to be harmful to students, um so then, in essence, you are agreeing. Um with Miss Pruitt's concern because we may um, from a very logical and simple. Um application of logic to the numbers, have hundreds of students who are learning remotely four weeks at a time. So uh that, I believe we are in agreement on that, um as opposed to um. Being in opposition on that point.
And I, I would just add to that, Doctor Cabral and I have worked throughout the um, the K, the PK to five buildings um over the past week and. The, the, the look on the kids' faces, the excitement that the teachers have to have all their kids back in front of them, it's, it's really remarkable. Um and Mister Dean, you're right, that, that we want the kids in front of us, and I think that's what my plea is. Is please to try and take every caution so that we can have our kids in front of us. And we don't have to send them home. That's really important, um because we, you know, we just have a few short weeks left. And, you know, our numbers are, are going up. Our largest um months of, of positive cases was January. And we are now back in the, what, what was happening um close, right before um December vacation. Uh so. That is a concern that I have cuz I'm, I'm, I'm a math person, I love looking at numbers, and so I analyze them all the time. And so that's, that's something that I'm, I'm looking at, that our cases are going up. And the, the number that's going up also is the number that are in school. Um because, you know, we, we had that cushion of the hybrid where, and I'm not suggesting we go back to hybrid by any means. But we did have that cushion of the hybrid where if somebody tested positive, they may not had been, have been in school to identify close contacts. But now that we are in school five days a week, which is great, um you know, please note that that is where we want our kids to be. Um it does increase the risk of, of identifying close contacts, so I do just wanna keep our kids in school. And that is the goal, so that, that's what my plea is, why I was pleading like that. So uh the next one is from Jim Dean again. He said, thank you for the additional information. I did miss previous comments. I have an additional three-part question regarding student face mask exemptions. Number one, are you able to share what percentage of students have face mask exemptions?
Can you? The last ti- oh, do you want me to do one at a time?
Okay, sure.
Um the last time I checked with the nurses, we didn't have any.
Okay, can you please, can you explain the process for obtaining a face mask exemption for students?
Yes, they would contact the school nurse and provide medical documentation for a need to not wear a face mask.
And what protocols are in place and what is being done to ensure students who are mask exempt. Are not shamed, bullied, or discriminated against for not wearing a mask in school?
So we have very strict policies for not shaming, bullying, or discriminating against any students for any reasons. Those would be um utilized. And, excuse me, and um. We don't currently have any cases, but if we did, of course, we would make sure that other students were protected. By using Plexiglas divi- dividers or such, but we have many accommodations for many. Psychological, social, emotional, physical needs of students, and we employ them regularly, and um. Bullying, shaming, and discriminating are absolutely not tolerated, tolerated for any of those applications.
Okay, um. The last question is from Kathleen Genova thirty-one Arbor Way. EPS deems people seated six feet apart close contacts on assumption they moved around in their seats. It is mathematically impossible for that to occur in all four directions. For the fifteen plus minutes required to be a close contact in the short OA periods. EPS Dashboard states, there is no in-school transmission, therefore. No such close contacts were infected. Doesn't data suggest EPS should follow CDC? On within six feet instead of keeping hundreds of kids out on false assumption?
Uh hundreds is a, a flawed data point. I'm not sure how that was calculated, but um. A- again, Ms. Genova, I, I have explained to you before, I'm more than happy to, to explain this to the public as well. The recommendation that within six feet would be at six feet. The recommendation that within six feet would be at six feet came from our Director of Public Health. I will not go against that recommendation, she is a medical professional who works with the DPH regularly on these issues. And uh and I respect her, and I respect that decision, and I agree with her, because I've been in the classrooms, as has Mrs. Pruitt. And we do see the movement that occurs, uh so they are within the six feet. Um so uh I can only tell you my personal experience, I've seen it myself. No one sits rigidly in their seat, ever. Uh the classes are forty five minutes at the high school, and they are literally at their seats uh for five hours out of a six and a half hour day. So uh fifteen minutes is is absolutely nothing. The reason there isn't in-school transmission is because we identify these students and send them home immediately. Would I um have those students then contracted the virus? Yes, there has been uh virus contracted, absolutely, and as I said before, it goes through families. Um so we believe strongly, um and our data shows us that sending those students home has protected all of the other students around them.
So, and and just to add on to that as well, is that, you know, again, it's not necessarily the transmission, it's the disruption in school. We want our kids in school, you know, we have the opportunity right now to bring them back. And if they have to stop and then leave school and be home again, you know, that's we, that's that's the concern. That's really, that's really what our concern is. We are fortunate that the transmission is low. For me, you know, when when Dr. Cabral and I are speaking, it's it's really about the 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 cases are increasing, it's not contract, being contracted necessarily in school. But the number of close contacts, because they are coming to school, um because they aren't aware that they're, that they have um you know, that they are uh uh COVID positive. But the disruption that it has on the other students has been, has been extreme.
Right, and I and I certainly don't want to uh belabor the point or debate it, I just want to uh acknowledge that we agree to disagree on that determination. Uh within six feet, per the CDC, which you're quoting, is literally five feet and eleven inches. There is absolutely no way a student does not move one inch for more than fifteen minutes in a class. So we will respectfully agree to disagree on that point.
So I know that this question has been answered, but it came up a couple times, so I just want to have a um just a clarification. Kristen Dunmead, twenty four Armor Lane, you said last question, but I would like clarification. Is it okay to leave the state for less than twenty four hours, specifically New England states? I think the question is, will they have to qu- will they have to quarantine or or produce a um twenty four uh PCR?
No, okay, so uh again, no, we will put that on the district website.
So it is okay for them to to go?
I want to read her question exactly. It is okay to leave the state for less than twenty four hours, especially New England states, yes.
And that's all the questions.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, um next is Superintendent Notes, Dr. Cabral.
I do not have any yet.
All right, and next is Assistant Superintendent Notes.
So I just want to update everyone on um on MCAS. On Thursday, April first, Commissioner Riley announced that he will recommend to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education that they modify the state graduation requirements for the class of twenty twenty two. Um if approved, this year's eleventh graders would not be required to take the MCAS test. In addition, the timeline for administering the test in grades three through eight and ten will be extended through June eleventh in an effort to provide maximum flexibility for school districts. Current juniors and seniors may still um take the test this spring to qualify for the Adams Scholarship uh or the Coplick Certificate of Mastery. Juniors who do not participate this spring will be able to test for scholarships during the retest period in fall twenty twenty one. Um in addition, DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, will offer remote administration of ELA, English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science Assessments this spring for grades three through eight to accommodate families who choose to have their children learn remotely through the end of the school year. And the department will be providing us with additional information in the coming weeks. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you. School Committee Notes, Caroline.
Well, I I want to thank Chrissy for her impassioned plea uh to families to continue to be diligent in in um following safety protocols. Um and also in relation to what Dr. Cabral said, um you know, we do know that uh COVID fatigue is um just overwhelming everyone. And, you know, it's certainly understandable that people are anxious to get out and about and resume a more normal life. But, you know, there are, we've got the vaccines, which is wonderful, but right now the vaccines are in a race with the new variants. Uh the UK variants, which is, I I hate to sound so botanical all the time, but this has been ch- been um covered in virtually every news outlet. The UK variant is sixty percent more transmissible and sixty seven percent more deadly, and it is now the dominant variant in the United States. So that's a real concern. The other thing is that there are increasing um cases of what they call vaccine breakthrough, which is people who have been fully vaccinated more than two weeks before, sometimes up to a couple of months before, are actually being diagnosed with COVID. The assumption is that probably these are some of the variants, but um it's still a scary proposition. So as I said, it's a race right now. The more quickly people are vaccinated, the vaccines do seem to be at least somewhat effective against most of the variants. Um the better, the the better off will be, and the sooner we can return to a kind of normal uh educational programming, so um without without being worried every minute and without having to deal with as as uh both Dr. Cabral and Mrs. Pruitt talked about this really rampant cro- close contract, close contact, um the rampant numbers. So that's, thank you for for those pleas, uh Dr. Cabral and Mrs. Pruitt.
Thank you. Michelle?
I just have a quick um comment, it's been really nice to be, I've been up at the high school a lot with robotics, and just listening to normalcy start to come back to the schools. Hearing, you know, in the the volleyball team in the gym playing, or hearing, seeing the football team, or lacrosse out on the field. Or the marching band coming by in formation as they walk down the hall from one room to another, hear their music. It's just, it's been really nice to to experience that.
Who thought you'd say football in April, huh?
Yeah, they're crazy. It's very cold out there.
Okay, uh Jackie?
Yes, I just wanted to welcome back all the children that had been remote only all year back to school, and I want to thank the educators and the other children in the classroom for trying their best to make these children feel welcome and happy to be back, and um I hope the families are having a good experience being back. The second thing is, I am looking very much forward to the groundbreaking tomorrow um at Parkview for the new elementary school. Um if you haven't had a chance to look at the video that the School Planning Committee put out describing the new building and all the wonderful wonderful things that will be in the new building, I highly suggest you do that. It's so nice to have something so positive and so exciting to look to look at, so I would highly recommend that, thank you.
Jen?
Hey, um Jackie, I'm so glad you mentioned the groundbreaking, because I've been looking forward to that for, since we got the invite, so I I can't wait to be there tomorrow, it'll be great. And um just wanted to let the community know about some of the activities that school committees across the state do. We have, uh it'll be virtual this year, but the Annual Day on the Hill, um which is the day for legislative advocacy uh will be taking place next Friday, and I know some of us will be participating in that. So just so you know, um you know, we talk a lot, went over the kind of the broader budget discussions um about how state budget and and, you know, all of their decisions uh trickle down to us. So just so you know, we work very hard um to have that representation um with our legislative contingent throughout the year, and then especially at these kinds of events. So working hard to build those relationships and hopefully benefit from them, you know, in the future. That's it.
Thank you. I also uh am looking forward to the groundbreaking um of the Blanchett Ames Elementary School. Uh I will have to ask somebody where we're supposed to meet, because I don't know where we're gonna meet at that. I get many comments about people going, what's going on up there, so it's very exciting, that's a very good thing. Also, a point of information, the April fifteenth School Committee meeting is canceled. Our next meeting will be on April twenty ninth. So uh that's our next school committee, but also a reminder that the town election, I correct me if I'm wrong, Saturday, April twenty fourth, correct, at the high school? That's right, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just want, yep, ten to four at Oliver Ames High School. So um looking forward to seeing people there. Um as always, I want to thank Linsuza for uh her diligent note-taking. Joe Bowman from Ecap, but I also want to thank Dr. Cabral and Chrissy Pruitt for being front, the frontline for Easton Public Schools. Um it's amazing, you don't think about all the different things and and uh that it can happen during the week or two weeks between our meetings, and I just want to thank you both for doing um over over the top work. Want everybody to stay safe. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect for collective bargaining with Unit Eight and transportation contracts. And by doing so in open session will be detrimental to the school committee's bargaining position. And we will not return to open session. All right, so I need a, I need a second.
Wiseman, second.
All all those in favor?
One deal, yes.
France, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm out of order. DeLuca, yes. Um so this meeting is adjourned, and we are heading into executive session and nod to return. Okay.